Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, you're welcome.
We're getting picked out. She's gonna take that, that's yours.
Good evening. And as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for this hour on Monday, June 26, 2017. As always, we'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Bob Hamel in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, invincible of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Mary Reynolds, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Bowden?
Here.
Counselor Littman?
Present.
Counselor Baer?
Present.
Counselor Hamel?
Here.
It's always a tough one for you, isn't it?
Thank you. Let the record show that all six city councilors are present tonight, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. We'll also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Whitteman. First order of business is a proclamation. We always like those. Start on a good note. I'm gonna come around front for this if I can. Very special proclamation tonight honoring one of our city's grand traditions, and I'd like someone to join me up here to receive this proclamation and stand here for the reading of it. And tonight, we're honoring the 20th anniversary of the Temple Benet Israel's food, annual Jewish Food Festival, and there's no one more appropriate, as we all would agree, I think, to have, represent the temple up here tonight to receive this proclamation than Irene Gordon. Surprise, surprise.
They made me come.
You didn't bring me anything.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
No, I didn't.
Okay. So I have a proclamation to read here, Irene, and I'll hand this to you on behalf of everyone here tonight. Proclamation, let it be known to all citizens of the city of Laconia that I, Edward J. England, Mayor, do hereby proclaim Sunday, July 9, 2017, as Temple Benet Israel's 20th Annual Jewish Food Festival Day in the city of Laconia, and bestow this honor to recognize 20 years of bringing cultural diversity and festivities to the city of Laconia by sharing traditional Jewish foods that are strongly tied to history, memory, and identity. Whereas the Jewish Food Festival, which began 20 years ago as a modest spread under a small tent on the front lawn of the temple, has now grown to a much anticipated event, drawing a large crowd not only from Laconia but from all over New Hampshire and beyond. And whereas the festival unites the community through a cultural experience allowing residents and visitors alike to learn and enjoy the authentic customs and traditional food of our Jewish friends and neighbors, and whereas the Temple Benet Israel's Jewish Food Festival honors and celebrates the growing diversity in our community, it is a labor of love that helps bring neighbors together by introducing them to the Jewish heritage and culture. Now therefore, I call upon all citizens of Laconia to join with me in recognizing Temple Benet Israel's 20th Annual Jewish Food Festival for continuing its history of sharing memories, family stories, and authentic traditions of its rich Jewish heritage, and for being an important part of the rich communal life we are fortunate enough to experience here in the Lakes Region. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you.
Yes, this is a team effort, no question.
A team effort. We all know who the captain of the team is, though, right?
There he is.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Eric.
Give a second here for our guests to leave the room.
I'm surprised we picked it up, I didn't.
Thought we were gonna have a good budget.
Isn't it wonderful to see the public interested in the budget?
You thought they were here for us, right?
I did.
Oh, boy, there's gonna be some tech worries in town.
We've got four left. Don't pan the crowd now, it could be embarrassing for us.
What crowd?
Four left.
Four left, and two are employees.
I thought it was all here for the budget, public hearing.
Yeah, I know.
They were here before.
Aren't they?
They were here for the discussion.
Oh, there's one here.
They needed room.
They were here for the general discussion.
Okay, first order of regular business tonight is acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. Those minutes start on page seven of your packet, and we're talking about the meeting minutes of two meetings, a regular meeting and a budget hearing meeting on June 12, 2017. Those minutes were promptly distributed the very next day to the members of the city council by the city clerk. No corrections or changes were received by her, so unless there are any changes at this point in time, I'm going to declare that the minutes to both of those meetings on June 12 are accepted by the council as submitted by the clerk. Consent and action calendar, we have one item, it is on page eight of your packet. Eight, that can't be right, eighteen.
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 Actually nineteen.
Okay, this is from Easter Seals, New Hampshire, and her request is to use the end dock at Weir's Beach. By "end," I believe they mean the one closest to the Weir's Channel. As outlined in the attached letter and diagram, on July 8, 2017, for the annual HK Powersports Land and Poker Run. This is an annual event, no new changes, and so motion would be in order to approve the request for Easter Seals, New Hampshire, to use the city dock at Weir's Beach as requested. By Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, and that motion carries. Next up is citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate place on the agenda for anyone who is in our audience tonight to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone meet that description tonight? No? Okay, we're moving on. We have no interviews tonight. You will recall that we had two interviews for the planning board that should have been scheduled, or were scheduled, for last meeting that did not happen, and those two interviews have been rescheduled for the next meeting, first meeting in July. Public hearing, on page 21. Okay, this is the official public hearing on the proposed municipal budget for the fiscal year 2018. Notice of this hearing was made in the Wednesday, June 14, 2017 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and at the offices of the Laconia School District. This is the appropriate time for anyone with us tonight who wishes to offer comment to the city council on the matter of adopting the municipal budget for fiscal year 2018. I'll declare the hearing open at 10 minutes past seven, and wish, ask if anyone wishes to offer testimony. Now, okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed at 7:11 PM. And we have no presentations tonight, we're on to mayor's report. And on the mayor's report tonight, I want to again focus on the Laconia State School property and report to the city council, which I think is fairly common knowledge at this point in time, that House Bill 340, which was amended by the state senate and changed beyond recognition by the state senate, was then sent to a conference committee of senate and house members, and they agreed on a compromise, and that compromise has been adopted and is on its way to the governor for signature. There's also money included in the budget that's awaiting the governor's signature at this point in time to fund, offer seed money to this proposal, as we have talked about before. This is the, this is the, so what is now soon going to be the law of land is the, is based on the inspiration of Senator Chuck Morris, the President of the Senate, and the author of what ended up being the final legislation, although it was amended somewhat significantly by the House in conference, and it calls for the creation of a commission to study what to do with the Laconia State School property. And the intent of Senator Morris and the legislation is that over time, and hopefully that will be a year or two at the most, that that commission will come back and recommend the formation of a, of a trade authority similar to the one that runs the Peace Trade Port in Portsmouth, and to oversee the economic development of the state school property, which will remain under the ownership of the state. So that's, that's what the, that's what this committee is primarily going to be charged with, is to see whether it is a feasible idea to create a trade commission to develop that property at the Laconia State School. And there's going, there, by the law, calls for a seven-member commission to be established within 20 days of the effective date of the legislation, and I don't know exactly when the effective date of that legislation's gonna be, but we have a pretty short timeframe here, and it is important to us because one of those seven members of the commission is to be appointed by the mayor and council of Laconia. And so we need to be getting on this sooner rather than later, and I'd like to make that appointment, if at all possible, and have it confirmed by the city council at our next meeting, certainly no later than the end of July. Now, one important piece of information here, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, is, as I had shared with you at a previous meeting, it is the intent of the legislation and the intent of Senator Morris that this commission is to be largely populated with people who have business experience, in particular, who have real estate development experience. And in fact, of the seven members of the commission, the law specifies that six of those have to have that experience, okay? And those are to be appointed by the governor, by the executive council, by the senate president, and by the house speaker. The one member of the commission who does not have to have business, real estate development experience, is the member appointed by us. So where the spirit of the legislation might be that it would be appropriate for us to appoint a person that fits that description, it is not required. So what I'm going to ask is that each of you privately share with me your ideas over the next two weeks or so about who you would like to have considered for appointment by the council to that position, and we'll get those names on the table, so to speak, and why, and we'll, we'll, I think the way we proceed is, I'll, I will recommend an appointment, and that appointment would be, need to be confirmed by you, the council. Okay? So what I'm asking is keep all these factors in mind and give me your input as to who you think ought to represent the city of Laconia on that commission. Any questions on that? Okay, committee reports. I know the finance committee had a meeting after our last meeting on items D and E. Call on Counselor Littman for a report.
Yes. So, on, two things that we considered. One, item D is the veterans' tax credit expansion, and the second one was our existing elderly exemption, which we had two years ago adopted, that we would review on the odd year. With respect to the veterans' tax credit, there was an expansion of that credit that municipalities could take up, and we were waiting for some legislation to be taken up this year, and I just wanna make sure the reference we have here is, is in fact HB 430.
HB 430 was the original bill establishing it. Senate Bill 80 was the one that allowed it to be phased in over the three-year period if municipality chose.
Right. So, just for anybody who's looking up, if you go to 430, you wouldn't find what we're talking about here, it's SB 80. So basically, what this does is allow us to enhance the veterans' tax credit over a three-year period as opposed to doing it all at once. With these tax credits, it's not an increase in the amount to be raised by taxes, it's the amount that gets allocated that the rest of the property taxpayers pick up in support of either the elderly or in this case, veterans. And so we're recommending that we go forward with the phase-in as outlined on page 23 of, excuse me, am I right? Nope.
Forty-two and forty-four.
Forty-two and forty-four, is that the? Forty, forty-two is the veterans', right?
Elderly, forty-two. Forty-four is vets.
Forty-four is vets.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So basically, what we're, starting with initial tax credit, the expanded tax credit at 150, which will be in tax year 2019, and then going up to 300, and then 500, this is, would be taken up with the understanding that it would proceed assuming the governor signs this into law, which we have no...
We did learn since our last meeting that he has.
Okay. So at this point, there's no contingency on it.
Can I interrupt just for something quick? According to the page 44, it says 150 to become effective the 18, 2018, is that correct?
That's for the tax billing year, and it will reflect in the fiscal year budget of 19, so one is a tax year tied with the assessing year, the other...
So 19 is for '20, and '20 is for '21?
As far as our fiscal years go, but the dates, there'd be a $150 credit available as of April 1st.
I just didn't know if you, 18 is the budget we're doing now, so...
No, it's, it's next.
But I mean, the dates don't...
It's effective the April 1st, 2018, in the assessing year, we're not dealing with a fiscal budget year on that particular one, so those dates are accurate.
This is correct.
Yes.
And it doesn't change the amount of tax collected, it's just who pays.
Right.
And just, since I think you have, the manager wouldn't mind, in terms of just briefly talking about what the expansion represented in terms of, it was active duty who served in a theater of conflict, and now it's expanded to anyone who was on active duty, is that...
Yes, there used to be specific periods of time that they considered active wartime, and those veterans were allowed to apply for, and receive the credit if they, if they chose to. This would expand it to what they're referring to as an all-veterans credit.
So, all veterans that are out there and coming, will have an application form that they'll be able to, be able to find online.
Will have it online, will have it in the assessing office, and it would be, to apply by April 1st in any given year, and it'll be effective for the tax bills that follow that April 1st.
So I guess we take up the formal vote of that later in the meeting.
Yes.
With respect to the elderly exemption, we're recommending three changes that have to do with the exclusions of income. We're increasing, recommending to increase for a single elderly person, the income that, from 23,000 to 25, for a two-personed family, from 31 to 35, and then from the asset limit from 70 to 75. We arrived at those numbers looking at towns, including Concord Dairy Hooks at Keene, London Dairy Loudon, Portsmouth, Salem, Franklin, Rochester, Belmont, Guilford, Samerton, and Meredith. And, you know, just to, to put it in perspective, in terms of our neighbors, the total value of all our exemptions in 2016 were over $5.6 million on property valuation of $1.9 billion. I compare that to Meredith, which has 2.2, almost 2.3 million, on 1.8 billion of property value, and Guilford, which has 2.77 million on property value of almost 1.66 billion. So I think there are some communities that are greater than, than ours, but I think in terms of the relevant areas of communities that are, would be considered equally well-off or better well-off, that our exemptions will be exceeding those. And so that's, that'll be our recommendation later in the meeting.
Is this, is this a phase-in, or is this just...
No, this, this is a continued continuation of what we already have in place, it's just in terms of the income limits.
We look at it every two years.
We're looking at it every two years. Last time we looked at it, we did not make a change, this is the first time in four years we'll have made a change.
Okay, thank you. We'll be taking these two items up under the business tonight, in terms of voting on each item separately. Any other committee business to take up tonight? How about liaison reports? Anybody have a liaison report?
Did I, did I already report to you about what happened at the planning board? I think I did.
Yes, you did. It's on tonight's agenda.
I'm just old and senile, give me a break.
Okay, citizens request to comment on current agenda items. This is the appropriate time for anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on a matter that is somewhere on tonight's agenda. Is anyone who meets that criteria tonight? Okay, we are to city managers' report, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your agenda packet for the second meeting in the month, you have the project update. As you know, we're pretty much down to punch list items, down on the Lakeside Avenue project, the kiosk went live last Wednesday. We've tried to have folks down there to assist members of the public and have kind of a soft opening with it. Through our back office software, we have been able to watch trends a little bit, and Donna was sharing with me today that it appears somewhere in excess of 80% of the transactions are occurring electronically, either with a credit card or a debit card, as opposed to people putting coins into the meters. So, you know, that's interesting, and the money, you know, is tracked on a daily basis by the kiosk, and, you know, we're, we're monitoring and learning as we go along, but seems like a very successful rollout of it this week, and we'll be continuing through the rest of the summer with it. As you know, this fall, after Labor Day, we'll go in and we'll do the final wearing course of pavement down there, and we'll do the cut-in and do the poured colored concrete crosswalks at that time as well, because that's the appropriate way to cut in and put them in, is after the base course is put on. So those will take place in the fall. We're moving ahead with, sorry, Frank Bean Road, the reclamation was done, the first course was done, and we're getting ready to do the final surface in July. We're working on Winter Street, to be working on drainage in July and paving that in August, so we can wrap that up in advance of schools starting. I know the kids love to hear us talk about schools starting already, but with Woodland Heights School up in that area, Adam Street is in the queue as well, as well as the overlay for North Main Street. We're also gonna be striping, and we do that, after we do that overlay, a bike lane, will not cause any widening or anything, but on the part that the city controls from Tremont, basically up to the intersection at Elm, and later in your agenda, you see we've got a request to support a striped lane for the, maybe the center road up to Robbie Mills, but it would give a designated recreation bike lane for people to access one of our very attractive recreation parks up there. Messers Street, we continue the permitting with the drainage project we're doing there, and that's inching closer. We're moving forward on the Levitt Park tennis courts, everything is done except for the final colored surfings, colored surfacing, the striping and the net installation, so weather permitting, we should be playing tennis there, hopefully the first week in July. The Dog Park project, got some good news, where it was reviewed by the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources to determine if there was anything archeologically sensitive there. The answer was, there is not. So I know Kevin Dunlevy, our Parks and Recreation Director, is pulling together a meeting with the key people of the Dog Park, including the family that's donated the $50,000 toward construction and the $50,000 reserve account to help with the maintenance going forward, and it's gone through all the approval process, so it's just a matter of going out to bid right now and getting that constructed, and we expect that to be open hopefully at some point this fall. So that is good news there. The Robbie Mills water supply is listed in here, we've been working with the state, they've been great, even though sometimes it seems like things go at a snail's pace, I can assure you, this has been moving along very rapidly with the state administrative services locally here. Kevin Dunlevy's got a great job, we've got Guilford well ready to jump on as soon as the final signatures are complete, and we will get that, that water back to the park as soon as we can. For the most part, we've had, we've had a good amount of Mother Nature cooperating with the irrigation of the field, so it, it hasn't been an issue, where the little bit of the challenge has been, is we've been using the porta-potties up there rather than having, you know, the bathhouse restrooms or the, or the park restrooms available up there. In addition to that, we had a little underground fire over the weekend in a handhole with the underground utility project that Eversource was quick to respond to with a local contractor. I know I reached out to Counselor Doyle and to the mayor to just kinda give them a heads-up as to what was happening in her ward and the, and the mayor just in general. Repairs were made, they are permanent repairs, it was some kind of a loose connection down there, but the repairs are permanent, and a couple of affected parties that lost power did have power back later on that day. I know police were involved, our fire department was looking to procure some generators for one of the restaurants down there, so they were able to keep their refrigeration going and not lose product, so we hate to see it happen, but it was a good team effort to, to get that in place, and hopefully that's the last issue that we see down there with the underground utilities. Motorcycle Week, we have some very preliminary numbers, I think they're more complete on the revenue side than they are on the expense side, just through the way some of the bills have been rolling in, but, and again, not quite final numbers on the revenue, we're looking at a little over $133,000 at this point, compared to last year, I think our final number was just around $155,000, so the lion's share of that is probably gonna be just due to some, you know, fewer vendors and vendor licenses down there. We've got some of our labor expense, we've got some outstanding labor still to receive bills from the University of New Hampshire Police Department, who bills us for their employees' times versus some of the out-of-town police employees become our temporary employees in essence, and they run through our payroll, so we're waiting on some billing there. We're also waiting on some of the billing from street sweeping contractor, trash collection, chemical toilets, some of the lighting rentals, so those are just lagging a little bit. For the most part, our in-house staff, we feel the numbers are fairly firm, although we haven't yet extrapolated. Fire staffing for the Sunday of Motorcycle Week, because they run on a Sunday through Saturday pay week, so again, and not everything always lines up in nice, neat little columns, but on the, just for the Laconia police overtime, we budgeted $30,000, again, not saying this number is final, but we're in the $14,000 range for expenses at this point, just on the overtime, not counting in, excuse me, any of the retirement costs or other costs. On the fire side, we budgeted $23,000, through this report, we're a little over $13,000, so again, significantly under on both of them, but we'll firm those numbers up over the coming week with the, hope to give you the final numbers once everything trickles in for your July 10 meeting, but, so, expenses that we've received to date are running around $71,000, and again, a big one outstanding, I believe, with UNH Police and some of the other items that I've mentioned. that I've mentioned. And that will be my report.
Counsel Lippman.
Just on the report, in terms of the outstanding expenses, not to hold you to a number, but is your sense that we're going to be able to break even for the week?
I think my sense is we'll do just slightly better than break even, so we'll be in the black.
Counsel Hamel.
Thanks, Scott. A few questions. A few, actually, since last Veterans Day, I mean, no, no, the Christmas parade. Brought up the fact about poor lighting at Veterans Park. And I think you mentioned to me that maybe Siemens might be able to do something there to, I mean, like a study or give you some recommendations on lighting that area. Just wondering where we might be on that.
Sure. And our Public Works Director, Wes Anderson, and Wes Anderson and I have spoken of that. We're doing the final tally right now on that LED project, with the hope that there's going to be some money left there that we could repurpose to go for those lights. So it's definitely on our radar, and we will be bringing a proposal together, either to fund it, maybe with some remaining funds there, or possibly work with the Downtown TIF Advisory Board about bringing a recommendation forward through that direction.
Okay. And I'm going to bring back my five-year effort here of Beeman Street, where it's halfway through the year and I've heard nothing, and the repairs on Highland Street that were promised.
I will bring Wes up, but I think we got most of the specialty repairs, and I don't have that sheet in front of me, but I know Wes sent me an email, and I can certainly go downstairs and get it if we want to wait, or I can get you the information tomorrow.
I haven't driven on Beeman Street for a while, so it might be done, I don't know.
Beeman is done, I think.
Beeman's done?
I think four out of the five were done, and Highland, whatever was remaining there.
Is not done.
I know it was Busby's priority to wrap up Lakeside for us.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just want to make sure it's still in the.
I have the, I have the email, but I think, I think the specialty cuts are done with the date and paid, and I will certainly find that email and forward that to the council tomorrow.
Okay. My last question is the Riverwalk from City Hall to Spar, which I noticed it's on, on the thing here. But I guess my question is, I mean, that's been funded for at least two years, maybe three. And just curious when we'll see a shovel in the ground.
We're designing that with the engineer right now. One of the things that, if you recall, about two years ago, we had received a $500,000 TAP grant, and a TAP stands for Transportation Alternative Program. That's the new name the federal government is using for some various programs. It used to be called Safe Routes to School and other items like that. They grouped them under one acronym. So we rewarded that, and then it was waiting on the federal fiscal year, which was an October 1st fiscal year, for us to be receiving the funds. And then there had to be so much in-kind. When we started working on some of the design and the engineering, and with the federal regulations for wages and the level of engineering that they were going to require for something as simple as a eight-foot or a 10-foot wide walking path, blew the numbers out of the water to make the point that we were getting some free money, very expensive free money. So I think that's identified on page 28 of your agenda, that we've withdrawn from the TAP grant. And we found it more cost-effective to handle it with local folks prevailing wages and still doing a quality job without having to engineer it to the nth degree for a walking path, that we declined and we withdrew our consideration. So the first part was waiting for the October 1st fiscal year, and then starting to work through the program. Staff came with the recommendations. We sat down in a meeting, and I concurred that it's better to go our own route. So we are active working with HGB Engineering right now for the design to get those going as quickly as possible.
So where's that money coming from?
Should be the existing dollars that the council had already allocated for.
In addition to the TAP?
The TAP, we're not accepting. The TAP also, the TAP requires some inside, I'm sorry, in-kind contribution sidewalks and match. We've got the money that was allocated through the Downtown TIF to be doing it, so we will just move ahead.
And that'll be enough?
Yes, with our available funds and move ahead.
And that was, that was part of the bond with the River, I mean, the Wild Trail, correct?
Yes. And that was going to tie in with some of the sidewalks that we're going to do up towards Woodland Height. And then I think we had to do in-kind match with some sidewalk that we were doing on Opechey. But some of the work that we were anticipating and using in the in-kind match, because we had already completed it, not tied into the federal fiscal year, the Fed said, oh, no, you can't count that in-kind match anymore. You've got to come up with a new match. And it just really was upside down in the numbers, so we decided to go our own route.
Counsel Bowler.
Yes, Levitt Park tennis courts.
Yes.
What do they have to do to complete that?
They are doing the colored coating, putting the lines on and installing the nets. So my understanding is the poster in, the base course and everything is down, so it's the color coat, lines and nets. And that's on page?
Yeah, the 28.
Yep. So our expectation is weather permitting, that's going to occur, and we should be playing tennis in the first week of July. So probably two weeks from today.
All right. Because, no, it's just been sitting there.
That, that base coat's had to cure a little bit before they can come in and put the color on time and do the striping, so it hasn't been.
They put a finish coat on top of that?
Yes.
They do?
Yep.
Okay, so that's the one that'll smoothen it out?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So within two weeks, weather permitting, we'll be good to go.
All right.
Great. Questions or comments for the manager?
Make one comment here, if I could. Counselors, in reading this report, are probably aware of the fact that there's a report in here that when the Downtown TIF Advisory Board last met on June 20th, they forwarded questions to the city council indirectly to about ongoing issues and future plans, RE the parking garage. And so they're, I inquired today of the manager, and he informed me that their next meeting is July 18th at 10:00 a.m. And it was my intent to go to that meeting on the 18th of July to discuss this matter with the TIF Advisory Board, and so I'm letting you all know that, in case any of you would like to accompany me. July 18th at 10:00 a.m., here at City Hall.
What's that date again?
July 18, 10:00 a.m.
Where do they hold those meetings?
If more than three of you come, we'll need to post it as a public meeting. But let me know if you plan to attend, and I would have the clerk post that, and if you intend to come to that meeting, okay?
That would be preferable. We do post the, the TIF meeting, but it would be preferable if we knew that a majority of the council was coming.
You said 10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
Where do they hold those meetings? Here?
Right next door in 200B.
Okay.
What day is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Okay, we're on to new business. First item of new business is on page 29 of your packet, and is a request to accept Provinco Road. We're going to have a quiz first to see who can identify where Provinco Road is. Anybody know?
Yes.
Everybody knows? You know, because it's in your ward.
Yes, I got a map.
Anybody else know?
Yeah, going to the new building.
It's the road that leads down to the new apartment complex dormitory for the college, off of Mile Road there that goes up to Belmont.
Comes out of it, yes. Funny thing is, our map is out of date.
I wish you were prepared, Counsel Bear.
Because if you look at the map, where it shows Apple Ridge Road, and then it shows Provincial Road right beside Apple Ridge Road, but if you go looking for it there, it's there.
Now, you're pronouncing it provincial.
Well, that's just.
It's not spelled that way.
Well, maybe not.
How do you, how do we pronounce it?
However you pronounce it, Mr. Mayor.
Anyway.
Whatever it is.
Provinco.
But anyway.
It's not provincial.
All right. So are you going to handle this, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, this has gone through the regulatory review, both with Planning and Public Works, that it meets all of our standards, with one condition, that they submit a paper copy of Water Sewer and Stormwater Infrastructure Plan. So we have a paper copy along with digital on hand, and we're good to go. It's a good project. It was Double D Development, which was Dick Anagnost out of Manchester, and pleased that he was here, and hopefully he'll be back to do more.
So this is a dead-end street?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So there's plenty of room for the vehicles to turn and all that stuff?
Yeah, I mean, it's all.
It's a very nice road.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments before we get to making motions here? All right, a motion being ordered to accept Provinco Road as a city street, with the condition to have paper copies of the Water Sewer and Stormwater Infrastructure Plan submitted to the Planning Department by August 1st, 2017. Counsel Bear, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would, thank you.
All right. And a second by Counsel Bowler. Any discussion? All those in favor of making Provinco Road a city street, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're on to zoning now, page 33. This is coming back to us from the Planning Board. You will recall that when their last zoning proposal for the changes to the table of uses with regard to the commercial residential zone, that plan was rejected by the council with a request from the Planning Board to remove the stipulation that nightclub dance hall needed a special exception, and that it remain a permitted right. So the Planning Board met on that requirement, that request from the city council, and as I understand it, approved that change. So this is coming back to us, back to the city council, exactly as it left us, except for that one little change, where nightclub dance hall remains a permitted use in the commercial resort district and does not change, does not change to a special exception. Is that your understanding, Counsel Bowler?
That is my understanding.
Okay. So the Planning Board, as Counsel Bowles reported to us at his last, at their last meeting, held a public hearing. Oh, yeah. Now I remember. On this matter, at which exactly zero people testified. So we have a choice here. We can either, we are not required to hold a public hearing on this matter, if we are willing to accept the public hearing held by the Planning Board. If not, we will need to schedule a public hearing before we can vote on this.
I move that we schedule a public hearing.
Counsel Bowles moves we schedule a public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Doyle seconds the motion. All right, discussion on that issue.
I'm just going to say it. You've heard me say it many times. We ought, we ought to have a public hearing, even if nobody comes, especially on this that's been volatile on some of the things we've done or not done over the course of what's going on now for two years. Is that how long it's, this stuff has been around? So I'm an advocate for public hearings in this particular case. I'm an advocate for a hearing because of the procedural history of it. And I'm, there you go. Shut up now.
Any further discussion? Counsel Bear.
We had a public hearing here in the council a month ago on that very subject, so we've heard the pros and cons of that particular issue. And if they couldn't go to the Planning Board.
We didn't, did we have a public hearing?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. We had loads of people here.
That, but that's before we sent it back to the Planning Board.
Well, it was their testimony that made us send it back for the change.
Okay.
Remember all the people that came up.
You're talking about the public hearing that, and when we rejected the proposed uses and sent it back to the Planning Board?
Yes.
I thought you were talking about something a couple of weeks ago.
She's giving you that look, Counsel.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Sorry.
She loves me. She, you know, she just has a hard time saying it.
Any other discussion? All right, the motion before us is schedule a public hearing at our next meeting, which is?
July 10.
July 10, on July 10th, for the proposed table of use changes in the commercial residential zone, commercial residential, commercial resort zone.
You're close.
Thank you.
You're close.
As proposed by the Laconia Planning Board. All those in favor of scheduling that public hearing, please raise a hand.
Can I ask one question before we take the vote?
I'm sorry?
We'd ask one quick question before we take the vote.
Sure.
Is there any proposal in the offering that we are aware of? Where holding the public hearing would cause a delay, and someone's trying to?
I'm not aware. I mean, so, no, I'm not aware of anything at this point.
The answer to that question is simple. Because this has been adopted, but because it's been put on the table by the council a long time ago, and now we put on the table, nobody can come in with a proposal that would alter what the uses are right now. So the placard is in place, so we don't.
Development is stayed that would be affected by it.
So I guess my, my question is then, is do we see the wisdom of moving this through at this point, based on the points Counsel Bear made, so that if someone has something they want to put forward, they can do so?
My only, my only thoughts on this really is that when the Planning Board has had, the very first time they had the, the, ah, I lost my train of thought, the public hearing on it, no one showed up. But when we had the public hearing, people did show up. So just by the fact that no one showed up, the Planning Board for this last time around may not necessarily mean that they wouldn't show up here.
Good point.
But to what point? The point, my only concern is that there may be somebody out there that was out of town at one point, maybe hadn't made it back in time for their business. And there's been a few times in the past that the council has passed things and then had to eat crow and remove, maybe not this council, but other councils in the past that have had to redo things when people did show up from being out of town. I just want to make sure.
I don't know what crow tastes like.
I, well, that's, yeah.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All right, the motion before us is schedule a public hearing on this matter for July 10th. All those in favor, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. Two votes in favor, four votes opposed, and motion fails. All right, the next motion would be in order would be to approve the changes to this, to the table of uses proposed by the Laconia Planning Board for the, for the commercial resort district as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Bowles. Is there a second? Counsel Bear seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, motion carries, and that, those ordinance changes are adopted. Okay, now we're back to, we're on page 41. And we are to, first reading of Resolution 2017-18, relative to tax exemptions for the elderly, and to schedule a public hearing on July 10, 2017, during the regular council meeting.
Wait a minute.
We missed, what did I say?
Please go to page 39.
I'm on the wrong one. All right. First reading of Resolution 2017-17, relative to establishing a non-capital reserve account for the Laconia School District, to be titled the Laconia School District Education Stabilization Reserve Account, and to schedule a public hearing on July 10, 2017, during the regular city council meeting. And that resolution itself is on page 40. Before we get to making motions, any comments, suggestions, well said on this one? All right, so we need to waive the reading of this. Motion, first motion would be in order to move a waiving of the Resolution Number 17, in it to read in it, or waive the reading of it, motion in resolution in its entirety, and to read by title only. Can I have that motion, please? Counsel Hamel, seconded by Counsel Doyle. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, that motion carries. Motion would now be in order to move a first reading of Resolution 2017-17, relative to authorizing the city manager to establish a non-capital reserve account for Laconia School District, to be titled the Laconia School District Stabilization, Education Stabilization Reserve Account, and to schedule a public hearing on July 10, 2017, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Counsel Lippman, would you like to make that motion? Sure. Is there a second? Counsel Hamel seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of establishing this account, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have five votes yes, one vote no, the motion carries. Okay, now we're on to page 41. And that's the first reading of Resolution 18, relative to tax exemptions for the elderly, and to schedule a public hearing on July 10th. And that resolution is on page 42. So Counsel Lippman, you want to review for us very quickly what the resolution calls for?
So basically, we're raising.
So basically, we're raising, in the indented paragraph, if you have it in front of you, raising the amount of net income that can be considered from twenty-three thousand to twenty-five thousand for a single individual, married from thirty to thirty-five thousand, and the net asset exclusion from seventy to seventy-five thousand based on a review of area communities with similar property values to work from as a basis. And, you know, this completes our two-year review.
Any questions or comments before we get to making motions? Okay, motion be in order to adopt resolution eighteen without reading in its entirety and to read by title only. Councilor Lippman makes that motion, and seconded by Councilor Baer. Any discussion? All those in favor of reading by title only, please raise a hand. We have six votes affirmative, that motion carries. Motion now made by Councilor Lippman to move a first reading of resolution 2017-18 relative to tax exemptions for the elderly and to schedule a public hearing on July ten, 2017 during the regular City Council meeting, seconded by Councilor Baer. Any discussion?
Just would, Councilor Lippman, I would point out that this is not a change that causes an increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
All those in favor of adopting a resolution on first reading, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, and motion carries. While we're on the general subject, we're on to page forty-three. This is the first reading of resolution nineteen relative to adoption of the all-veterans property tax credit and establishing the amounts for implementation and to schedule a public hearing on July ten, 2017 during the regular City Council meeting. That resolution is printed on page forty-four of your packet. And again, I would ask Councilor Lippman to summarize.
The legislature in this past session, and we understood from early in the meeting, the governor signed into law what was at one point Senate Bill eighty, which expands the availability of a veteran's tax credit to those who didn't necessarily serve in an active wartime capacity but served in the military. And so we were waiting to see whether the legislature would allow for phased implementation of this, which that's what that bill did. And so what we're proposing to do is to phase the full five hundred dollars in over a three-year period as permitted by legislation.
Questions or comments? Okay, motion be in order to waive the reading of resolution nineteen in its entirety and to read by title only. Councilor Lippman makes that motion. Councilor Baer seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, that motion carries. Now Councilor Lippman moves to a first reading of resolution 2017-19 relative to adoption of the all-veterans property tax credit and establishing the amounts for implementation and to schedule a public hearing on July ten, 2017 during the regular City Council meeting, seconded by Councilor Hamel. Any discussion?
Councilor Lippman, I just pointed out similarly to the elderly exemption, this does not increase the amount that has to be raised by taxes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, and resolution eighteen, I'm sorry, nineteen is adopted on first reading. Okay, we are to page forty-five, which is requests from Ms. Woodiman for transfer requests from stabilization accounts. Ms. Woodiman?
Before you, it was a request for, there were several, sorry. There were several large retirements this year, and this request is to transfer money out of the stabilization account for accrued leave into the various departments to help fulfill a shortfall. Most of, all of these departments have covered at least half of the retirement costs, including the New Hampshire, the payouts as well as the retirement cost.
What's in that account now?
I think there's three seventy?
It's over three hundred.
Okay.
I think three seventy is in the ballpark of what it was.
Okay.
Questions or comments before we get to making motions?
And I think this is what the account was established for, was when we have an extraordinary number of retirements in a given department. You know, we, as we talked about early at the budget session, that hopefully next year will be an opportunity to put some additional funds back in there. Many, many communities don't have any reserve account for, you know, a liability that stands out there that is in the future. So I think this is another reason why we've had good financial experiences, because we've got reserves appropriately established, so.
Is this three seventy, Donna, after transfer?
It's before.
So it'll be minus...
Almost half of it.
Down to about two fifty.
All right.
Give or take.
Any other questions or comments? We have two motions we've been requested to adopt tonight. So a motion would be in order to transfer one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from account eighty-two dash one oh one dash zero one zero dash zero 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 accrued leave stabilization as follows. Forty thousand dollars to account zero one dash four three seven dash one one zero dash zero 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 zero, police termination pay. Thirty-seven thousand dollars to account zero one dash five hundred dash one one zero dash zero 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 zero, DPW termination pay. And forty thousand dollars to account zero one dash four four five dash one one zero dash zero 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 zero, fire department termination pay. Someone care to make that motion without repeating it?
So moved.
Councilor Bowns, seconded by Councilor Baer. Any discussion? All those, Councilor Hamel?
Scott, this is just one half. The other half is coming out of each individual department?
Yes.
Okay. Good payouts.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor of adoption, please raise a hand. We have six votes affirmative, that motion carries. Next, a motion be in order to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from account eighty-two dash one zero one dash zero one one dash zero 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 zero, winter maintenance stabilization to account zero one dash five oh two dash zero 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 dash one zero zero zero, winter maintenance expense. By Councilor Bolduc, seconded by Councilor Hamel. Any discussion? Councilor Lippman?
Just a comment here is that we've been budgeting for sort of a middle-of-the-road winter. When we have a good winter, we put money away. When we have a bad winter, we don't have to raise taxes to cover it. So I think this is another good example of setting up good reserve funds for us.
Any discussion of that motion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, that motion also carries. Okay, we are on to page forty.
Councilor Lippman? Just on the, back to accrued leave stabilization, terms of, for when, next time we have a council meeting, do you have a chance to prepare, forecast what might be needed in the next year, or is that something that you have to get a little more into the year before you'll know?
Well, I'm going to be working on the compensated absence report as I put together the year end. As part of that, I have to look at the folks that, or the employees that would be eligible based upon their seniority, not just every employee, but, so I can certainly kind of go over that with the city manager once that's completed. So it may not be the next meeting, it might be the one following.
I think the three, the three you handled tonight were long-term employees in senior management positions, so therefore, you know, they rose. And in most of those cases, we get an indication when someone's retiring and to plan for it. There may be some folks who are a little more junior in nature and maybe a little less time, and those come and flow, and we don't even bring those to you. We find that money within the department. So this is, this is really only if we get a significant, and that's what happened in this particular case. But we can forecast to you, but I think off the top of my head, I'm, I'm not anywhere of a, I'm not aware of any significant long-term employees who have announced that they're going to be ending their, their time with the city, with the exception of, except you are all aware that Luke Powell is finishing up his time with the city at the end of this week.
And that's what this one was, correct? No?
No, that was for the Public Works Director.
Oh, okay.
Who retired last July or first of August.
Got you. Okay.
Okay, we ready to move on? All right, we're on to page forty-six. Next item of new business is a request from Mrs. Woodiman to approve departmental transfers. There are four of them there, outlined on page forty-six. Any questions or comments before we get to motions? Okay, a motion be in order to transfer from account zero one four one five one zero one zero 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 zero, city clerk, three thousand eight hundred dollars to account zero one four one seven one zero one zero 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 one, election salaries, same amount, thirty-eight hundred dollars. Secondly, to transfer from account zero one four three three one two five zero 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 zero, workers' compensation, thirty thousand dollars, to account number zero one four three five. Are there numbers missing there, or?
No.
That's it?
I'm just putting it overall to the whole budget.
Okay.
It's several line items.
Account zero one dash four three five, police station maintenance budget, an equal amount of thirty-five thousand, sorry, thirty thousand dollars. Third, to transfer from account zero one four three one three four three zero 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 zero, contingency fund, six thousand one hundred fifty dollars, to account zero one four four five two three five zero 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 zero, fire station maintenance repairs, six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And lastly, to transfer from account zero one four three three one two five zero 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 zero, workers' compensation, five hundred dollars, to zero one four eight eight three eight zero 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 one zero, municipal bonds interest, an equal amount of five hundred dollars. Someone care to make that motion for those four transfers, please? Councilor Bolduc, is there a second? Councilor Doyle seconds that motion. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question? What happened at the police maintenance budget? Where did that come from?
It's a series of items, and part of it with the, really deals back to the fuel item and then the electrical line items. And if you recall, we had an issue with some molding and air quality in the community room at the police department. It was one of those issues where it was, I won't say exactly like it was at the library, but remember how in the library we need to be running heat and dehumidifying, and they're almost battling each other in order to keep the, the books from, you know, getting moist and that type of stuff? We're running into that at the police department as a result of some of that molding, so there's that constant need to be dehumidifying, heating to, to help do that. In addition, they had some lift pistons that were leaking in the elevator that was not a planned repair. They also, at a recommendation, did some tinting of a solar film to actually help with the cooling and the heating bills on that, to try to keep heat in in the winter and block the sun out in the cooling in the summertime. And those are the key items that are driving that.
Councilor Hamel?
What's the one for the fire department, Scott?
We've noticed, we brought in a consultant to look at, we noticed some cracking in some of the walls in the weers station that are just, we wanted to get a baseline and determine if we could identify and get some measurements to watch them going forward, determine maybe there's some settling going on in the building or other items that may be happening. So we've got some baseline and some samples, and it's nothing, no recommendations came out of that, but it's something we'll monitor going forward.
Okay, so it's not here?
Uh, no, it's in the weers.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, before you, is a motion...
One more quick question on the fourth, sorry, a question on the workers' compensation. Is that the police department-specific workers' compensation, or is that the city?
That's just the overall city.
Okay.
We just wanted to neaten up one line item to not show a overspent of five hundred dollars.
Sure.
Any further discussion?
I was actually asking about the one with the police station budget, is that the same overall workers' comp?
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve these four transfer requests. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, those transfers are approved. We're now on to page forty-seven. And this is preliminary carryforwards to fiscal year 2018 as presented by Mrs. Woodiman. You have several pages worth of them there. And, Mrs. Woodiman, you want to summarize or call attention to any of these?
Basically, all of these items were capital line items or, or line items that were carried forward for previous years. As the city manager indicated, they'd been designated for a specific project. There were only two small carryforwards from departmental budgets that have been added to this, and that would be six thousand dollars from the library budget, because they're looking to purchase a new digital microfilm piece of equipment. And I think there was a small amount from the records department that was left over in the record preservation. It's less than two hundred dollars, but would be helping assisting with all the records that we have to preserve in the vault downstairs. So, but everything else you've seen before, other than, you know, the milfoil is a common reoccurring one, when we don't use it, we carry it forward. But every other one was one that was in your capital outlay request for last year, or carryforwards for last year, and if they're not used, we're just bringing them forward.
Questions?
The one on the library says from operating budget library.
I just need to verify with, with Randy what exact account that needs to come from.
It's coming out of either an equipment or a, a book related type of thing.
Or a couple of different line items.
As opposed to coming out of salary.
So it would necessarily be carried forward, so that's why it's here?
Yes, if we don't do it, we don't do it at all.
Capture it.
Councilor Lippman?
I just, for benefit of the public, who maybe is the large one related to roads, if you could just recover that one for...
Well, every year, we carry, we try to, what's the word I want to say? We kind of try to keep a little bit of our money that we have from the prior year so that we can get going with our road projects early on in the spring. That number right now is, is subject to change because we're still waiting on the last bills to come in from the paving, you know, from Busby. So I expect that that number will come down. Typically, it's in the two fifty to four hundred thousand dollar range, and then that way public works can get started early on before the budget gets rolling, is approved for next year. They can, they can continue onward with the projects that are slated for spring.
You're referring to the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Yes.
We expect that number to come down once the final tallies roll in for the end of this fiscal year. That was the most current number, so that's what we're using.
Well, mostly, as we talked about earlier, this is simply a matter every year of the fiscal year ending during the middle of the construction season. Okay, I have one big question. Do we have to read all this?
No.
We saved a half hour right there.
Right.
You could just say, as...
Okay. Motion be in order to...
Actually, this is just a preliminary, isn't it? These, these will be finalized and presented to the council when we get the...
This is purely informational at this point.
Correct. These numbers are subject to change and will be finalized at the last meeting in July.
Okay. I guess historically, I would comment this list is more abbreviated than we've seen in some years.
Okay, on item number nine, is on page fifty-two, and this is a request to authorize the city manager to sign documents related to Guilford Recycling Center and Access Road. And this has to do with the Laconia Airport, and I call your attention to the photographs that were in your, distributed to you tonight, as well as the information in your packet, including a map on page fifty-eight. And I think I can only, I have, I have another photograph here. I only have four copies of it, so I'm gonna send two that way and two that way. I think you all could share those.
Send it to the engineer.
Okay, so what this is about is, is Kimball Road, out on the northeast corner of the airport. So if you're driving north on Lily Pond Road, eleven C, and you get past the airport on your right, and you get to the, to the intersection there of, of Kimball Road, there's a sign there that says Emerson Aviation and a sign that says... and a sign that says Guilford Transfer Station. And that's also the back entrance now to Meadowbrook. That's the second entrance to Meadowbrook there. So if you take a right and you head down that road, very quickly, Kimball Road takes a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn, a ninety-degree turn, and goes back up past the old Kings Grant Inn, back up to Route eleven again, or eleven C, I guess that is, B. From that point on, the roadway continues also. And from that point there, where Kimball Road turns and goes back up north again, is referred to as the Kimball Road Extension. And that's what we're talking about tonight on this first motion. So you turn right on Kimball Road. Kimball Road reaches a Y. The Y goes back up to Kings Grant Inn. The other part goes straight ahead to the transfer station, okay? Soon after you make, if you go straight, soon after that, you come across the hangars of Emerson Aviation. And Emerson Aviation and the airport, and their offices are on the right, and they also have hangars on the left and airplane storage on the left. And they go back and forth across the road there, and there are stop signs going both ways on that road, on the extension road, because of the Emerson Aviation Enterprise. At that point in time, you're on airport property, okay? The road is. And it's Guilford Road, they have a right-of-way on our airport property. So that road, then, the extension continues to, not for very long, it can't be more than a quarter of a mile. And then the next, there's another left now that you take to go off to Meadowbrook. They're called Music Row, I think is the name of that street. Or you go straight to the transfer station, okay? So the gate to the transfer station is literally on the line between Laconia property and Guilford property, or airport property and Guilford property. So a good part of the extension road, Kimball Road itself, extension, is on land owned by the city of Laconia for which the town of Guilford has a right-of-way, a needed right-of-way, okay? So the first thing there, and as we know, they're going to improve their facility to a full-fledged recycling center from a transfer station, right? They're going to stop using ours for that purpose. So what they want to do is, they want to upgrade the extension to a Class Five road. And so what they're asking us, what they asked the airport authority first, which approved, and now is coming to the city council, is to have the city council grant approval for them to establish a Class Five road across city property in the right-of-way they already have, okay? And I think that's pretty well explained by your, in your packet, this one. This part of it's pretty simple, okay? They already have the right-of-way, they're simply saying they want to establish that as a Class Five road leading to the new recycling center and whatnot, okay? Any questions about that one? Okay, a motion being ordered, then, that the Laconia City Council approve a request from the town of Guilford to allow Guilford to declare Kimball Road Extension, which connects Kimball Road and Guilford's transfer station via an established right-of-way through Laconia Airport, municipal airport property as a Class Five highway. Someone care to make that motion, please? Councilor Lippman makes that motion, is there a second? Councilor Hamel seconds that motion. Okay, any discussion? Councilor Bullock.
Does the city have any, why does something happens on that road? Are we responsible for any of that, or?
Like an accident, you mean, or?
Anything.
I don't, can't imagine it'd be any different than it is now, whatever it is now. Right now, they have the right-of-way.
Yeah, but do they use it?
That's how people go back and forth to the transfer station now, it's no different. They make some improvements to the road to make it better. That road, the extension road, isn't as nice as the Kimball Road.
This is the one off eleven C?
This is off Lily Pond Road.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the road you're talking about? Are they going to extend it to the Kings Grant Inn? Kings Grant? Is that what they're looking to do, is go out on the other side?
No, that's already a Class Five road.
That's right here.
Kimball Road is a Class Five road, the extension is not a Class Five road. On the map you have there, on the aerial photograph you have there, let me see what I can explain it better. All right.
That road right there.
So if you're looking at this, Lily Pond Road is over here, okay? You're coming in on Kimball Road here. This is the Y I was talking about, that road. This road here goes back up to Kings Grant Inn. That's Kimball Road. Kimball Road takes that weird angle there and goes back up the hill. The rest of that road, from here to right here, there's a line drawn across it there if you look closely. That's the gate to the transfer station, okay? From here, from the Y to there is the extension.
That's the road they're talking about?
That's the road we're talking about. And it goes, that road is on airport property.
Is this the one that goes to Meadowbrook?
And that little note there that says Guilford Recycling Center is a Google Maps mistake, that's not where the recycling-
Yeah, it's down here.
Recycling Center is down in this corner.
And this is the road to Meadowbrook?
And that road that curves off is the road to Meadowbrook, yes. Anybody got that? All right, we have a motion and a second, do we not, Madam Burke? All right, any further discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries. All right, now, to the photographs you have here and the map on page fifty-eight. So now we're dealing with just the land in and around the transfer station and the gate to the transfer station. So on the map you have in front of you, you see the roadway, Kimball Road Extension is at the upper left-hand corner of that map. That's it coming in, all right? And where it starts, where the gray starts there is the entrance to, where the gate is that goes to the transfer station. So the transfer station is right up there in the upper left-hand corner. That line there, that first line that runs diagonally through this line right here. That line right there, that's the town boundary.
Okay.
That's the line, this is Laconia, that's Guilford, okay? That first line right there, as you can see, it almost perfectly dissects the entrance to the transfer station. So their gate is literally less than five feet onto town property, it's right there. Okay, so the issue here is that in in their plans to renovate their facility into a full-fledged transfer recycling center, they want more room. And the area on the map, that's circled, more or less, it's some kind of egg shape there by that bold line, that is a sand hill that was man-made, okay? I would say it's probably fifty feet high, relatively speaking. It's got trees, full-grown trees growing on top, it's been there a long time, okay? I have three views for you of that sand hill. This is what it looks like from the transfer station itself. So if you're inside on Guilford land, that's what that hill looks like. You can see how high it is, the trees on top it, and you can see what it's made of. It's good sand, I mean, it's very fine sand in many places. The second photograph, which is this one, shows what the hill looks like from Kimball Road. From Kimball Road Extension. So as you're driving toward the gate for the transfer station, this hill is on your right, okay? The final photograph. Oh, it got cropped. Okay, I'm sorry. In the printing, this got cropped. This one here is from the backside of the hill, or the Laconia side of the hill. And when Laconia built the perimeter fence a couple of years ago around the airport, that fence in that area is just off the picture to your, to the left of this photograph. So the fence is right here.
Where is that on this one, Mayor?
Does that run up the hill or along the hill?
Okay, the fence is not on the hill. Okay, you can see the fence barely. Just past the, just past the point where the Meadowbrook Road takes off, right here, you can see the outline of a line that goes down a hundred yards or so and then takes a right-hand turn. You can just barely see it through the, that's the fence.
Right here?
Yes. So the fence does not delineate town property. The fence was deliberately built on level ground, okay? So the fence is not built on the property line. The fence is built off the property line in that area.
Is this the range, the pistol range?
Is that what?
Is this the range right here?
The pistol-
No, that's the waystation and office for the transfer-
I know, yeah, here, but across from here, isn't that the pistol range here?
No, it's way over-
I don't know, maybe it was once upon a time, I don't know.
Well, there's one there right now.
That's in Guilford.
There's a range there now?
Yeah, there is. We qualify.
I was out there the other day, I didn't see any pistol range, but-
There's a range inside here where the fire was in that building.
It's hard for me to believe they'd be firing pistols right on the road.
Just off the road.
I don't know where that is.
All right, so here's the issue. They want, they being the town of Guilford, want to take out that hill. And you can see from this map, the hill is delineated by that bold, oblong shape there, okay? And you can see that about half of the hill is in Laconia. And about half of it is in Guilford. So they are asking for our permission to remove the hill, okay? And to level ground. So the, once the hill is gone, the hill would be leveled, the ground would be leveled with both the transfer station and with the fence, the base of the fence, okay? So the airport authority, in reviewing this last week, approved that to send on to the city council, but with several conditions. The three conditions that were asked for by the airport authority were that one, that after the hill is gone, that the remaining land be left at the same general grade as the adjacent airport property, meaning there's not a big hole in the ground, okay? In other words, you can level it, but we want it to be leveled with the remaining ground that we have adjacent to it that runs to the fence, okay? That's condition number one. Condition number two is that after hill removal, the boundary of Laconia Airport property will be clearly marked by a fence, a rough wall, or landscaping feature. In other words, when they're finished, we don't want our property and their property looking identical so that you can't tell the difference or where the town line is. So we have asked them, in effect, to plant grass, or hedge, or trees, or put a rock wall there, put some boulders there, something which delineates where the property line is between Laconia and Guilford, okay? We want a, in particular, we want a buffer because the airport authority would like someday to establish a trail system along the perimeter of the airport. And we don't want people building or doing whatever right up to the fence line. That's why the fence has deliberately been set back inside the property, one of the reasons, inside the property line. The third condition the airport authority put on it was that the sand removed from the Laconia portion of the hill has to be offered to Laconia Public Works Department at no cost. So the sand is ours if we want it. If we don't want it, they have to pay to haul it off.
And if we do want it, we have to pay to haul it in?
I'm sorry?
If they do, if we do want it, we have to pay to haul it in?
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming yes, I don't know. So those are the three conditions that the airport authority wanted in return for permission to do it. One, that the ground be left level with the ground around it once the hill's gone. Two, that a boundary be established that's obvious, doesn't have to be fancy, but that's obvious where our property starts and stops. And third, that we claim the sand if we want it.
Doesn't the sand have value in and of itself? I mean-
Wes is nodding yes.
So if it's our sand, why would we have anybody haul it away? They can haul it to us.
Is this sand that you can use to store somewhere, or is it good for the winter, or?
I've had a chance to look at it, see what it's made up of, whether it's angular enough for winter sand or whether it's just good enough for construction sand using in projects or whatever.
Where would you put it?
Probably have to put it at the old Moore Insight at Down and South Street.
That's a pretty good-sized hill, right? That's a pretty good-sized hill.
It is. Lot of sand.
Are we voting on anything tonight?
It's pure sand, it's just somebody put it there, who knows when or why. Councilor Lippman?
Seems like we have some more homework to do on this. Can we table this tonight and take it up without it being of significant consequence?
I agree.
And what homework is that?
Well, we just heard from the Public Works Director that-
He's got to look at it.
Got to look at it and evaluate it. I don't know if there's any other engineering aspects of removing that hill that are of concern or consideration for us. Not trying to be a bad neighbor, I just want to make sure that we're not incurring costs or having issues that are caused by the removal of that.
You know, and I think we need to know is, are we going to have to go there with our trucks and our payloader and our men to remove this, or how that-
They're removing it at their expense.
So they're going to bring it to Laconia?
I thought you said you didn't know whether they were going to bring it to us or not, or whether we had to go there.
I'm saying that they are prepared to remove and dispose of the entire hill.
Well, that's not exactly what council was-
Unless we want the sand.
Well, then if, I guess the issue is if we want the sand is an expense to us, which we weren't necessarily planning for.
How does it get here? Who pays for it? It's the cost of removing that much sand.
And my other question is, did you, did I hear you say that half of that is in Laconia?
About half.
And half is in Guilford?
Yes.
And they want to use this whole site for their?
No.
No, we keep our property.
No, they don't want a cliff there. They don't want to remove to their property and have this cliff overhanging. They want it leveled for stabilization reasons.
So, but, so they remove this, but it's for their transfer station?
Their half of it is, yes.
Okay, so our half, they just want to remove it and they're not going to use it?
That's correct. They're not allowed to use it, that's why we're asking for a border demarcation there.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
You can't come on to Laconia's property. I guess the, I'm sorry.
You know, if this all would have been brought up to the townspeople before they voted on this thing, they probably wouldn't be putting that station in there. Because that's got to be monies that the town of Guilford residents didn't know it was going to cost.
Yeah.
They did this all after they got-
Although you can see now that, you know, I'm guessing from this picture that well more than a third of that hill is already gone. So they've probably done most of the digging that they need to do on their side of it because it's well up the side of it. So they've already done that over the years, I guess. Probably used the sand for their own roads or something or other, I don't know. But somebody's been mining that, obviously. So I would guess that most of what's left is in the city of Laconia.
Well, that's, I guess, another factor that has to be, I think, demarcated is what part of that sand pile belongs to us and what part belongs to Guilford. Again, it's not trying to be, you know, delaying here. I think it's just realistically, there's some aggravator-
I'm just trying to figure out, I'm just trying to get a- I don't object- Reconcile what exactly the council wants to know and who's going to find it out.
I think we need to have Wes or someone from Public Works go look at it to find out if it's sand that we really want, or if it's not, then we don't need to haul it- we don't need to haul it anywhere, they can take care of it.
Yeah, I'd like to know if it has value, I mean, and what the value is, can we put some kind of value on it?
I'm just thinking that if the sand has value, we're going to go look at it and say, yeah, we'll take it. And if it doesn't, we already know Guilford has committed to haul it away. So we're in a no obligation situation, if it's good value, we'll lay dibs on it, if it's nothing that we want, Guilford's responsible for cleaning it out and removing it.
But we lay dibs with a cost to us.
But we would have a cost for buying a good quality sand we would use anyway, so if we've got some...
But on the other hand, I think we're conceding, you know, a couple of points here, I guess, be some give here to make it...
It shouldn't cost the city anything.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting at.
I'm sorry?
It shouldn't cost the city of Laconia anything, they should pay for the whole removal and bring it to where we want it.
Yes.
If we want it.
Okay.
Okay, so the two pieces of information I'm hearing are that even if we want the sand, we don't want to pay anything to have it transferred from wherever they're digging it to wherever it's going. And the second thing is, we want an evaluation before we vote on this from the Department of Public Works as to the quality of the sand and the usability of the sand, is that right?
Yeah.
I think we want to be a good neighbor, but we don't want to have to incur costs as a result of being a good neighbor.
Okay, so just so you'll know, for what it's worth, and I don't have any objection to not voting on this tonight, like, is not an issue. It was, the town of Guilford never suggested Laconia claim the sand. It was the airport authority that did that. The town of Guilford just said, we'll haul it off, we'll pay for it. End of subject.
Yeah, but the airport doesn't have the same interests as the city. I mean, I think they have interests that coalesce.
I'm just trying to make it clear, this is not something that Guilford proposed.
So they're going to move our sand?
Their position was, we'll take it down, we'll remove it at our cost.
And I'm not casting aspersion on what Guilford was planning, I'm just saying, we have to look after our own...
Might be good beach sand.
The delay will be, the delay will be what? Until the next meeting, there's no, there'll be a prejudice to anybody.
Okay, I understand what you want, so Councilman Lipman moves to table this to our next meeting, is there a second? Councilor Bolduc seconds that motion, any discussion? Halls in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, it is tabled.
I'd add a comment, Mayor, that if they, if it's going to cost Guilford something in delay, I'd be willing to have a special meeting to make this decision.
What a mess, what a mess. Now we all know what these pictures were.
Okay, we're on to page fifty-nine. Requested action is to, for the Laconia City Council to support the Laconia Highway Commission in its request to have markings on the edge of Meredith Center Road, which my understanding is, is only marked today with center lines, no edge of pavement lines, the purpose of which is to create sufficient room for a bike lane. And I believe, we're talking about the hill between Parade Road and the Robbie Mills Sports Complex.
Not any further, no further than that?
No further than that. So it's, in effect, creating a bike line by painting white lines on the edge of the road.
Is it going to be marked like a bicycle in there to show that it's a bicycle lane? And the state doing that, or we are?
I think we're going to be doing it on our part, so to do it just up that hill would probably just make sense, I'm not sure that they'll be doing that, but their request is to paint the line.
Any comments, questions, before we get to motions? Okay, motion being ordered to have the city council support the New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Traffic proceeding have the, I'm sorry, I had an accent on the wrong word here. That the council supports the New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Traffic proceeding with marking the edge lines on the Meredith Center Road from its intersection with Parade Road to the intersection of Eastman Road to provide sufficient room for bike lane as outlined on the information provided. Councilor Hamill makes that motion, is there a second? Councilor... Bounce.
Is that my name?
Sorry, too many bees. Councilor Bounce seconds the motion. Questions, comments?
So from North Main Street, they're going to go up Parade Road from Lexington? So they're out of the compact, city compact area, they mark the road? So are we marking the road on North Main, or are they?
Basically, from Lexington going towards Parade, we already have it width-wise. So all we just have to do is go in and put the bike lane symbols down on the road.
Up the hill. Symbols?
Right. Because you already got the width there with your edge lines on that road. So basically, when we do the North Main Street repayment, we're going to come through and we'll mark out the bike lane up to Lexington.
On our streets?
On our streets, correct.
And then just the bicycles on North Main from Lexington to Parade Road?
Correct.
To Meredith Center?
Correct.
All right, but they will still be responsible for the white lines in the future?
Yes, because that's their normal edge lines.
Okay.
So will this be on the right-hand side of the road?
Both of them.
Bike lane both ways, so you'll have one going north, you'll have one coming south.
North and south, right and left?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Further discussion? Okay, halls in favor of supporting this motion, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, the motion carries. Okay, we're, this one is not in your packet tonight. This is a request from the city manager to authorize him to enter into a license agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the Robbie Mills Water and Tower License Agreement and the Hank Rizley Field License Agreement. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so the council had the discussion a few weeks back about the wells, and it approved the installation of the wells, at the same time, Councilor Bear correctly pointed out that we hadn't seen an updated agreement to Hank Rizley, so the state indicated they would get both documents available for signature. We signed and moving them forward to governor and council for a vote ultimately. They wanted the certification of authority from the minutes, saying that the council expressly gave approval for me to sign documents. And we voted to fund money for the wells in the general scope of the project, but we did not specifically authorize me to sign the agreement with the state for the license there, so they were signed last week on the 21st. The state is just trying to make sure all their i's are dotted and t's are crossed, so they specifically asked that either on an affirmative vote at the council tonight that I sign a brand-new agreement, or that you can state that this vote would support me retroactively signing it on the 21st. So since they already have signed copies, that is the request, this hasn't held up their work in the process of continuing to get this fast-tracked, and they've been very helpful, so the exact language of the motion would be what we should use.
Questions or comments? Okay, a motion being ordered to authorize city manager to sign both license agreements with the state of New Hampshire for the Robbie Mills Water and Tower License Agreement and the Hank Rizley Field License Agreement retroactive to June twenty-one, two thousand seventeen. Councilor Bolduc makes that motion, is there a second? Councilor Bear seconds the motion, any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. Okay, last item on our new business is to revisit our discussion earlier this evening about proposed municipal budget. And quick refresh there, the goal was to take a quick straw poll on the items that were suggested tonight with the understanding that if majority of the council supported them as itemized, that the city manager would be instructed to incorporate those changes into the budget resolutions that will be presented to us in July. Nobody got that? Yeah, these are the, we're not going to, we're not going to do these tonight. I mean... So we're making changes, especially to the general, and all that's got to be added up. All right, let's start with the big one, which is the capital outlay issue, because there were a number of suggestions that I think are all tied together, but let me start by trying to summarize what I heard, because while everybody was headed in the same general direction, it's hard to ascertain whether everybody was exactly on the same page on all the details. Okay? And we can vote on the details separately if you want, but as... Well, let's start with the full picture, from what I understand it, and that was to add, in effect, if everybody got their way, we'd be adding, correct me if I got this wrong, $120,000 to the capital reserve, to the non-capital reserve fund to be spent $50,000, well, wait, okay, I had two different numbers, $40,000 on beaches and $50,000 on beaches, so I'm going to say forty. Okay? All right, so forty would be spent on beaches, thirty-five on Opechii Fence, twenty-five on basketball courts at two parks, and $20,000 on the walkway, the paved walkway through Opechii Park, do I have that right? $120,000 total? Okay? So, and where was that $120 to come from?
We were talking about that coming from...
One-time money.
One-time money, which was assumed to be the property closing, right?
Yes.
So the understanding is that the $400,000 approximately that we expect to reap in next fiscal year from the sale of Lakeport Fire Station, net, that $120,000 of that would be put directly, rather than into contingency, would be put directly into the non-capital reserve account.
Right.
Do I have that right? For those projects? I got that right?
Right.
Okay. Can I see a show of hands on who would support that, then? Oh, that seems to be probably going to pass. Okay. Police officer. Okay, where we left that, I think, with your with your blessing on this, since you're the one that brought it up, but as amended by Councilor Lipman, we would take another $50,000 out of that money coming in from the Lakeport Fire Station and put it in contingency with the understanding that it would, its primary purpose for now would be to hire another police officer for half the fiscal year.
Right.
I got that right?
Right, and I guess I would add to that is that putting it in contingency would allow us, A, to evaluate what the police chief and commissioners propose, and B, to address if there are unexpected issues surrounding the information you shared with us earlier around the Colonial Theater project that we weren't expecting that could affect that.
So it would, so we've spent $120 already, in theory, out of the $400. So where's the $280 going, then?
$280 would remain in contingency.
So we don't have to transfer...
That's where it would go, but I think we talked about early, just based on the $117,000, we transferred out to, out of the stabilization reserve fund for for the retirements that we experienced, is that we would want to start to build up that fund, some portion of that. $280, I think we ought to use to replenish that stabilization.
So let me see if I can separate the two issues, so if the amount for the police wanting to be held in contingency pending a plan presented by the chief is going into contingency right now anyway, so you can just, in essence, earmark $50,000 of that will be an opportunity to review on a police hire at some point in the next fiscal year, and you can have determination as to whether to fund it or not, but it'll still be sitting in that same contingency line item.
So it's already going to be in do anything.
Right.
So we're sort of making a promise to ourselves to revisit that over the next six months, knowing that it's there. Is that fair?
I'll remind you.
Can I ask for just one additional clarification, going back to the prior four capital items, $120,000? So right now, there's $100,000 proposed to go into the non-cap reserve, as it stands, that's not contingent on a sale of property or anything.
Right.
This is taking an additional $120, and do you want me to actually put it in the non-cap, or do you want me to populate those four line items under the capital and put $40,000 for beaches, and $35,000 for the fence, and $25 for the basketball court, and $20 for the pedestrian walk? And just put it in the appropriate place right now, as opposed to moving it to non-cap, which then means additional action that you've got to...
I think if everybody, which, everybody voted for it, I think that would be more sensible to do that. Instead of transferring it again.
I can move that $120 and break it into those four components, you can amend the budget, and that way it shows up there. I would just caution that we probably would not want to spend that until we know that the sale closes.
Well, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, I'm just, the $100,000 is real money. The $120, I'm not saying is not real money, it just isn't there yet.
The alternative is just to leave it in capital reserve, and when the sale closes, we can move it then, right?
You mean contingency, council?
Leave it in the contingency.
Yeah.
Just leave it in the contingency.
It's actually a little easier to have it in the capital.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be easier to line it up and show in the future years that those projects were funded, just so when you look back into it.
I would think the way you just suggested, and if the money's there, it is, if it isn't, we don't do it.
So I'm going to take the $120, move it over there, reduce the amount, go into contingency, but we'll put it into four specific line items. Okay, thank you.
Everybody good on that?
Yes, but we also have a strong confidence in that $400 net number, correct? Mr. Manager?
Okay, the other item I have on...
Confidence in the $400.
We have confidence in the sale closing going forward to where the number nets out. And one of the other options that, just in between the break of the first meeting and Chief Keenfield caught part of it, there may be an option for him to explore a COPS grant that we'll have to look at, which could potentially pay for some funding in year one, a little bit less in year two, and then phasing out, which is the same thing as you hiring the position and keeping it, so we'll explore some options for you and bring them forward as the, if not at the next meeting, it doesn't have to be done for the budget per se, but we'll be presenting some information for you.
Okay. The other item was Councilor Hamill's request to remove a total of $40,000, a total of $40,000 from the various line items in the fire department budget that add up to the overall so-called overtime budget. There's not a line item called overtime in the fire department budget. And transfer that same amount to contingency. Everybody got that? All right, who on the council would be willing to support that? Those opposed? All right, there's a majority support for that as well. And that is it on my notes, did I miss something?
We're not going to do the resolution?
Sorry?
We're not going to do the reading of the resolution tonight?
No, because we need to finalize those amounts.
Counselor Hamill...
One question I have on that is, because it's a separate resolution, based on our now near track record on Motorcycle Week, do we need to make any adjustments to the Motorcycle Week resolution before we pass it?
They balance each other out in terms of the revenue and the expense comes out at a net zero at the end, even though we carry some profits, so I don't think there's anything... No harm in leaving it where it is as it was presented, in future years, we may make some modifications if we see a trend that, you know, the revenue and the expense are dropping, but it's not going to harm us, if the money doesn't roll in, you don't have it to expend anyway.
Well, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't accept reality from a budget standpoint?
We'd have to make adjustments to the expenses as well.
Why budget X amount for expenses if we know we're not going to come anywhere close to spending that much money?
Well, that, or if we don't have...
Are we encouraging spending that much money by putting it in as that's what the budget is?
Yeah. Well, I think the vendor revenues have gone down the last two years, haven't they?
By 20,000 this year, right?
Yep.
So maybe we ought to decrease the amount that we start with, and also decrease the line items to meet that.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is whether or not that budget is even realistic anymore. I, I understand it's a separate account and it really doesn't matter, but-
And I, I know the, you know, the drive-in property, which is a big property, has gone through some flux down there and didn't have vendors, you know, there this year, but obviously there's a multi-year lease arrangement in place for, to do that, so I'm, you know, would be hopeful in, certainly if the footprint expands and whether, I mean, we can do it either way, but we would make a small, a small crack at it this year and amend it and bring it down partially and reassess it a year from now.
I'm just suggesting we take a look at it, anyway, to be-
Counselor Littman? I think administratively, what we just went over consensus-wise, does not change the first resolution, because it's all, you've already, you're carrying in, in these numbers, if I'm not mistaken, maybe I am, with respect to the general fund, you already had accounted for the sale of the property, is that right?
Correct.
So what we're, what we're basically doing is within the general appropriation, reallocating it, right?
Um, I'm going to back up, so I got to stand corrected. In the recommendations I brought to you in the general discussion tonight, we need to include that 475.
Okay.
It did not include in the proposed budget to begin with, so-
I stand corrected.
But, yeah, so I'd rather spend the week, two weeks, document the numbers, make sure everything, give you firm numbers to work from, rather than trying to do it on the fly.
Next, the next discussion will be final budget numbers.
July 10th, we'll bring you, based on this reflection, including the 475 in there, making, I didn't hear any objections to the solid waste 120 going in and the two revenue sources for that. We'll bring you those changes, so that when you do adopt the budget, the appropriate line items are populated.
Right.
Okay, are we, on all we can do on that subject? Anyone else on the budget for now? Okay, unfinished business, the only thing was a second reading, we're going to postpone that until July. Nominations, appointments, and elections, we have three. Three candidates we introduced, we interviewed at our last meeting. So a motion would be in order to appoint Bruce Canore to an alternate position on the Library Board of Trustees for a one-year term expiring at the end of March 2018. Seconded by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Baer. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Canore, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, and motion carries. Next up, we have Greg Page. Mr. Page is seeking appointment to the Water Board, Board of Water Commissioners for a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2020. Counselor Bolduc makes that motion. Counselor Baer seconds it. Any discussion? Halls in favor of appointing Greg Page to another term on the Board of Water Commissioners, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, and that is approved. Thank you. Finally, sticking on the, oh, this one, I'm sorry, it's a different board. Joseph H. Driscoll III is seeking reappointment to a regular position on the Weir's Tiff Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2020. Motion being ordered to appoint Mr. Driscoll, again, made by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? All those in favor of that appointment, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Council comments? Counselor Hamill?
Yeah, I just want to thank Scott and Donner and all their staff on coming up with another budget this year that meets the tax cap and still funds a lot of capital programs, raises, and pensions, and a lot of things, so great job on that, and really appreciate your hard work.
I second that.
Anyone else? Okay, I need to notify the council that we have need for two non-public sessions tonight, and we're going to do these separately. So this is what's going to happen.
Oh, my God.
Because they're on separate subjects, so we're not expecting any public action after these, are we?
No.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to, we're going to make a motion to go into the first non-public session, then we're going to move to come out of that, do what we will with the minutes. Once we're back in regular session, we'll make another motion to go back into non-public session on the second subject, and once we come out of that second session, we will adjourn the meeting without further action at that time. Everybody got that?
Yes.
Okay, so the first motion would be in order to, to go into non-public session according to RSA 91A 311, 32, under item, let's see, they're both Es, right?
No, one is D and one is E.
So I know what the, the second one is E.
Is everyone you want to go first?
The first one is, one involving litigation.
Litigation would be E.
And this, and the-
The other one will be D.
The next one was D, all right. So we go into non-public session for item D, consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which if discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. And that motion plays. Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Bounce, thank you. So we need a roll call vote on this. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Bounce?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Baer?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Hamill?
Yes. Yes.
87.
All right, we are in non-public session, and we'll, we'll call the roll ourselves when-
Are you sure I can wait? I don't mind.